Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting dated Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. If we could please start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask this, but I doubt it. Do we have any citizens' input? See, those were doing budgets. I don't think there would be. All right, so we will move on to administration. And we're all set, except we're gonna go right into budgets, right? So what we'll do is we'll start with the library first, please. I'm gonna take it out of a little bit of order here.
Good evening.
Mary, how are ya?
Mary Riordan, Gale Library Trustees.
Nice to see you tonight.
Good to be seen. The Gale Library has submitted a budget of $163,600 for the 2026 fiscal year. Of that amount, $122,400 is for salaries and $41,200 is for operating expenses. The library currently employs one full-time staff member, which is our library director. We have four part-time staff members and a couple of on-call employees. Our full-time equivalent number is 2.42. Last year, just as a point of a little historical information, the library provided $301,360 in value to the town of Newton through the books, movies, and programs that it provided to the residents. And if you look at that against what our budget was, which was only $147,000, return of advancement was kind of like $105,000 from the library.
That ain't too shabby.
No, no. I can't see you with these, and I can't read this without them. The following lines have seen an increase in our proposed budget. Community programs is the first one. We are planning to make a couple more adult programs. And so we would need more funds, obviously, to do that. And we have had several things here in this room here because of the space limitations of the library, so we would be looking to have a couple of more dates that we would use this area. The legal line has increased quite a bit. Historically, we haven't had any legal expenses. But with the passage last year of House Bill 273, which amends the library statute concerning library user records confidentiality, we need to have new policies and new forms. We have had an initial engagement with town council, who was nice enough to send us something that he had already prepared for somebody else, which gave us a place to start. But we feel that we will probably have to have review of our policies and forms to comply with this law. So we've increased that amount. The media line has increased a bit because, well, this is the first time since 2018 that we're increasing this amount. It's not that we haven't tried in previous years, but it just hasn't come to fruition that we could increase that. And since 2018, books, relatively speaking, have gone up about $4 a book. And so we've had to cut back on what we can order. The other lines have gone up, the computer maintenance. We're starting a plan to replace the PCs we have, one PC a year. All of our PCs at the library are old. They are all running Windows 11, but they're getting to the end of their useful life. So we're planning to replace one a year so that we don't end up in a year where we have to replace three or four. The other part that we've increased is the salary lines. We've included one step increase for our employees. And additionally, we've increased, have a small increase in the number of hours to support the extra programs that we're planning on implementing for the adult programs. So those are the areas that have increased. The rest of them are pretty straightforward. Do you have any questions?
So I have a question. You decreased your maintenance repairs line.
Yes, that line historically had been used to do maintenance issues on the library itself, the building. And we, in the past three or four years, because the town didn't have a maintenance person to do some of the stuff over there at the library. And so now we have Bob. And so in the past couple of years when we had Mark, the town had picked up those costs, incidental costs of doing the maintenance.
Right, I think we have a problem with Bob. We don't know, he's charging maintenance at the library to general government buildings and not to the library. They have their own maintenance line. Shouldn't we keep it there? Then shouldn't we get rid of that line altogether if they're not gonna do maintenance?
It depends on what else they have in that line.
Well, we reduced it quite a bit, as you noted. And the reason we've kept it is if something happens and we need to do something, you know, to maintain something in the building, and we can't, we need to do it on an emergency basis.
It could be reduced to a dollar. I would, you know, not get rid of it completely. And all the expenses would be covered under government buildings for the town, because it's a town building.
Right, that's all I'm looking for, some clarity between, because if the library is self-sufficient on computers and payroll, and that's all, then why don't they own the maintenance of it too? Or if we're gonna pull the maintenance, then it's like, why not pull the computers then and put the computers on ARM on? That's why there's that line where you cross it.
Computers are different because that's a library thing, but government buildings is government buildings, so.
Okay, if I could just point out, historically, we've paid for the carpet cleaning in the library. So is it your contention that that should just be done by the town as a building?
I'm not sure.
That would go under that, so.
But I don't know, our custodian cleans that building, doesn't he?
No.
Well, he comes in and vacuums.
He doesn't do the carpets or the floors.
I'm sorry.
He does routine cleaning once a week, but he doesn't do any cleaning. It's not Bob, it's.
No, it's Edwin, Edwin or whatever, yeah.
So we should probably keep that money there so that we'll be accurate. We know the number, what it's costing us.
Well, yeah, the only thing I'm wondering is if we should just increase it and have any maintenance on that building goes to that line so that Bob's not confused when I go there for this, it's this line or this line. And if he goes to the library, just put it on the library line for anything. Maybe that line needs to be increased and we take it out of government to move it there.
I'm all for bringing it back up to $1,000.
Yeah, $1,100.
Or $1,100, whatever it was.
Is that what you guys want to have done?
Because we don't want to be increasing the budget any more than we need to, so.
Well, I would say pull it out of government. So we're not, pull it from government, put it back on this line.
I would propose where they've already deducted, and she's brought it down like she said, just leave it at that $500 amount.
Yeah, because then we'll get to the point that we're gonna have to allocate his time between other town buildings and the library and.
Exactly, so if they need to hire another contractor to come in, they would be able to take care of it directly. I would just leave it as is for right now, and we'll see how this year goes. And then we can always readdress it in the future.
And just keep any regular maintenance under government building.
Okay, so if Bob, sorry, if Bob goes to Home Depot and buys something.
It'll be under government building.
For $13.95, that should be under government buildings, not library.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so we'll leave it at.
As is.
As is, okay. Any other questions?
You go with that, Dan.
When you guys are done with your budget this year and you have the money left over, what do you do with it?
Historically, in the last three, four years, we did not have any money left over.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, because I know you guys.
No, if we did, we would have to give it back to the town.
We don't have to.
Right.
The library doesn't have to give it back to the town.
Okay, let me.
They can.
This is being recorded, right?
Write that down right now.
She doesn't have to, because the library is its own entity when it comes to it. So you don't have to give it back. You do, which is great. Like, I'm not complaining about that. But actually, it was more so if the library had access or had another account that had money that you guys had built up.
Well, we have what we call a revenue account, and it's basically people come in and make copies or use the fax machine. And so we use that money to buy more tana.
Sure, and I get that. I'm looking towards the future right now. So if the library was able to supplement a future building or whatever, if there was an account, I don't know, that's why.
If you had like a revolving account or something.
There are several accounts that the trustees of the trust fund hold. Some of them are, one of them is really big.
The building fund is a larger one.
The building fund.
But it's specific to the library.
There are some small ones. They are like $300.
Those are for purchase of books and stuff like that.
1806, and we get seven cents interest in a year. But we can't dissolve it unless we go to court.
But the thing is, if you had one of those trust funds that, I think what Dan's getting to is if it specifically said about being able to use towards a, and my wife was asking about the Friends of the Library were bringing this up, if you had a trust fund set up so that money could be put into it towards a future building of a future library and/or equipment for that new library, you would be able to put any money left over at the end of those years into that trust fund, and then that money would specifically be used for that purpose.
So then would the library trustees need to set that up on their own? It wouldn't be a trustee fund.
We don't hold any of the trust funds.
And I understand that.
We would do it through the trustees.
So we'd have to set up a, we'd have to set up a trust fund.
Do you know how many?
Because they don't have extra money.
Well, in case that they did.
How many?
There are five, I think, trust funds. Three of them are less than $1,500. And then there's the big one for building that the Board of Selectmen took over the authority to expend from, I want to say, five years ago.
There's one for a library?
There's one for a, I believe, library building. Yeah, I think it's like $150, something thousand.
That's fine.
I have it downstairs.
I didn't think to bring the trust fund things with me, but.
You guys are all here. There's no better time to ask than right now, so.
So, yeah, we usually spend all we have, especially in this past year.
I completely get that, too.
Any other questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much for your thoroughness.
Thank you for your time this evening.
We're doing next DMD.
We're gonna bring Rob up.
All right, thank you. I think we're gonna go with the PowerPoint first, right? Does that get any bigger, Rob?
Geez, I hope so.
Yeah, don't you want it to play?
What's that?
You want it to go.
Yeah, that's totally fine. And then as I go through the slides, we can just move them up. Okay, so that's just a picture of us on Mario J there. So the mission statement, next one. Mission statement of the Newton PD is to actively improve the quality of life within the town by reducing crime as well as the fear of crime, empowering the citizens, and achieve an integral working relationship with our community. Appoint and elect officials, emergency services, and other communities functioning within the framework of our justice and social service systems. So our 2026 goals, we're doing a promotional process right now. There are two candidates for promotion to corporal. One candidate is in the process for promotion to lieutenant. This process is extensive. It consists of a written exam, oral board, and a chief's interview. And we're doing the oral boards on Thursday night. Another goal is retention and hiring of personnel continues to be one of the top priorities of the department. The department seeks to hire a ninth full-time officer. We tried to do that last year, and because we were on a default budget, we couldn't do it. And we also need to replace the SRO, who's gonna be leaving the department sometime in the beginning of the year. We want to purchase a new cruiser to ensure the vehicles are up to date with the latest technology and maintain operational efficiency. And we're hoping to do that in 2026. We're gonna continue our partnership with our schools to update and train on school emergency operation plans and ensure a smooth transition when the SRO departs. We're gonna continue working on state accreditation. We've made a lot of progress on that. We'll be applying for grants to help defer operational equipment costs, improve traffic enforcement initiatives to make our roads safer for all users. We're gonna immerse the police department into community, in the community with programs such as Coffee with the Cop, Pizza with the Police. So we're gonna try and get more involved with that. The goals listed above are the way we accomplish our last goal, which is our ultimate responsibility, and that is to increase the quality of service and customer satisfaction and make Newton a safe place to live and work. There's just a couple of accidents that we had over the weekend. Next one. Oh, you got it? Okay. Starting in January 2025, the police department began to track the following sources of income: parking tickets, pistol permits, records. July, the Comerent is $1,878. Detail vehicle fees were $21,070. I'm sorry, $21,070. Detail administration fees were $24,080. The Newton Police Department is not generating revenue from the enforcement of motor vehicle violations or criminal cases. Any money collected and fines goes to operate the police academy. The 2026 personnel, the police department consists of the following: eight full-time sworn officers, four part-timers, one animal control officer, one full-time administrative assistant, one accreditation manager, and two contracted court prosecutors. And we're hoping to get that ninth full-time officer. The 2025 significant expenses: uniform upgrades, ammunition, paid off the final leased vehicle, office equipment upgrades, addition of our accreditation manager, records management system update, community outreach. We spent money on that dunk tank, trunk or treat, old home days. The 2026 budget, the budget has increased by 11% over 2025. This amounts to $104,273.50. The increases are mainly due to the wages for that ninth full-time employee, that ninth full-time officer. And that's a 6% wage increase for the department. A holiday payout, cost to include, pay for the accreditation manager, cost to include the prosecution team, the increase of $9,790 for the cost of the new records management system, that Pro Suite that we just went to, that's much more expensive. We didn't have a choice. Many items have been level funded or reduced in this year's budget. The budget impact: A deliberate, well-thought-out budget will increase retention and attract quality new hires. It will permit the department to hire the ninth full-time officer. It allows for a better process for coverage, pay for the town holidays, continue to pursue the goal of becoming state accredited, the ability to provide extensive training to our staff with an emphasis on the supervisors, and improving community outreach. And training is big with us. We've done a lot of training this year. There's a picture of everybody in Southampton doing the active shooter training. And the next one, that was at the fire department where we teamed up with the fire department to do autism training, autism awareness training, and that went great. Some of the department training awards, I went to a prestigious FBI leader trilogy courses this year, so I did all three of them and completed it. Officer Adnizio completed firearms instructor courses. He's our new firearms instructor. Officer Adnizio and Bodak completed read interrogation, interview and interrogation school, which is highly sought after. Officers Adnizio, King, Tibbetts, they've all completed the FTO courses. So all three of them are FTO courses along with myself and Sergeant Mounsey. So community outreach, we provide fingerprint services for anybody in town that's, you know, getting employed, getting hired. Prosecution services, rabies clinic, drug takeback. We've had attendance for a couple of national night outs. Old home day, trunk or treat, ride to school in a police car. Plan to do a lot more of that.
Which is better than a ride home.
That's, that is true, that is true. Just a couple of pictures up there. Just all the guys showing up to Veterans Day. I thought that was great, police and fire. And then, as usual, Robin has to have a picture up there, so. No, no, go back, go back. So this is Robin and Paula at trunk or treat. Here's our crew at trunk or treat, too. And, yep, this is all the guys, just a few pictures, families. And the next one is Officer Bodett and Officer Adnizio. That was at, actually, that big night out in Amesbury that they had. We sent a couple of cars over there. And the other picture is Sergeant Mounsey at Packer Meadows when we did a awareness for scams with the Attorney General's Office. And next one. So statistics. So to date in 2025, the NPD has increased the arrests by 43%. Last year at this time, we had 39 arrests. Right now, we just had, today, we had a 90th arrest. So it's much more than doubled. Overall, the calls for service have increased in 2025, and the nature of the calls are becoming more serious. Rockingham County has changed through a new records management system. There have been a lot of growing pains throughout the county. The statistics from September implementation through the year might not reflect the actual calls for service, but we try to do the best we can with the system. So traffic citations, we went from 50 last year to 68. Regular incident reports from 112 to 133. Again, arrests from 39 to 90. Assist citizen calls, which have gone way up, which is a good thing. 174 to 302. Motor vehicle accidents, who went from 24 last year to 32. Parking enforcement, 55 to 61. And motor vehicle stops, we went from 2052 stops to 2075. So everything's gone up across the board. And I think that's about it. Do you guys have any questions?
I have a question that doesn't pertain to the budget, I guess.
Okay.
Since I see Pete Kane sitting over there. I haven't heard people complaining about parking with Massachusetts plates at the beach at all this year. Did we solve that?
I mean, I think with all those tickets, I don't think anybody takes. I don't think any.
I didn't hear one complaint.
Yeah, I don't think anybody takes a chance parking there anymore.
We solved it.
Yeah.
Keep it in effect.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good thing.
Chief, the increase in.
Yes.
I think it is, gosh. Computer? No.
Consultant, IT consultant support.
Maybe it was IT consultant support.
Yes.
Does that have to do with us changing the?
Yes.
Vendor?
Well, it has to do with changing from IMC to Pro Suite.
Okay.
It was.
Which is what you had to do.
We had to do because of Rockingham County, yeah. So it was a difference of about roughly $9,700 for that. That's why it went up.
And you had no choice?
We had no choice in that at all.
None.
As a matter of fact, I think the whole county wants to go back to IMC. They're having a tough time, but.
But we, you as a department, had no choice. You have to use that.
No choice at all, no choice.
So Paula, make note.
Yes, I know, yep.
Something to put in the voter's guide.
Well, that, and it's gotta go to the default. We had no choice, and it has to, so.
Good point.
Think that was my only.
And that's for you to be able to keep the communications with all the other departments in Rockingham County.
Yeah, and that replaced IMC, and that's how we do all of our calls, all of our report writing, everything. That's how we communicate with dispatch.
Just so the town knows.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rob.
One question, Rob. Police detail, if you're gonna do what you had thought about, does that need to be raised?
No, because that's gonna come out of the detail account. Okay, yeah, so that won't reflect on this budget.
The police detail in this budget, what you have in here.
Yes.
Is for the town.
Yes.
So it's not, this isn't where it goes into the detail account. We pay them out of the detail account. This is what, like, so if Mike, the road agent, needs a detail, this is what the town pays.
Right, and we used to have $1,000 for part-time, $1,000 for full-time, and we really didn't need that because it's all the same. Doesn't make a difference. So we just moved it all to one account.
Put the dollar there.
Yeah.
We get the discounted rate, too, right?
Yes.
Only if you're riding the bet.
Prosecution, are we paying for that out of salaries right now?
So, yes, so prosecution right now, well, prosecution right now, we want to add that because before we were absorbing it.
Right.
Because of. Because of-
Through your salary.
Yes.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're just breaking it out?
Yeah.
And the word salary, I plan, we're gonna get rid of-
Get rid of it, sure, I get it, yeah. You don't need to cremate any more animals?
Uh, no, no.
Is that, no?
Nope, so, we just kept the dollar in there, but I don't ever think that we're gonna be doing that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
There were like several different control lines.
Yeah.
Instead of having all these different lines-
Absolutely.
... providing the D series lines.
Right.
Perfect.
Like the boarding, you took the boarding out, too?
Yep, it makes sense.
It looks like the leases, you know, you said the leases were paid off, that's good, too.
Yep.
And just for everybody's edification that's listening, the next vehicle that you want to buy will be purchased outright.
Yes, yes.
Will not be a lease attached to it.
There's not gonna be a lease, we're gonna buy it outright, after that, that $25,000 goes into that account, that'll get us over the top and we'll be able to buy it.
You'll be good to go.
Yeah, yeah.
And will you be using that oldest one for a trade-in, when you purchase the new one?
Yeah, usually, the oldest one will go to, like, the academy, we have a guy going to the academy in January, he'll take that back and forth.
Okay.
It'll be used for details, I mean, it's still serviceable as far as details go and stuff like that, so.
Oh, all right.
If we keep it there, it'll still earn for us.
Yep, very good.
What was the security system line?
So, that's been there, and we never used that, it's been there for a while, we never really even knew what it was, we just, we just gave the money back all the time because we didn't, you know, we didn't use it, we're there 24/7, we don't turn on the alarm, so, because there's somebody there all the time, so.
Okay.
Was that line maybe used for the, like, cameras and other facilities?
I, I think it was used years and years ago for, for a time when we didn't have overnight coverage, maybe.
And you had to set the alarm on.
And they used to set the alarm, yeah, but, um, it hasn't been used in a long time.
Okay.
There is a system in there, but it doesn't require any maintenance or anything like that, and it works totally fine.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Did you want to just keep a dollar on that?
Um-
Does the place hold it?
I mean, I don't, I don't anticipate needing it, but if you think it's better to put a dollar in it, that's fine.
I don't anticipate them using it.
No.
Just get it out of it. I'm in agreement. Okay.
Any other questions?
Tom, outside.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
And next will be Trish. Excuse myself for one minute, or Trish steps up.
Hi.
Which budget are you doing first?
Just so we can get on the right page.
Um, how about EOC first?
Okay. Emergency Management, one, two.
Yep. I ordered dinner because I have like 27 pages here to go over, so, only kidding.
What are we having?
Yeah, right. We'll just wait one minute.
I'm good. Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, he's fine.
Okay, it's only the chair, okay.
Fine.
Okay.
Vice Chair's still here.
Okay. So, I don't, I have a rationale, I don't know if you want me to go line by line, there's some things that do need explanations on, so if we look at the first line, the 301 equipment maintenance, we just left that at 50, for the most part, if anything extravagant happens, I can use my emergency operating revolving account, so I didn't really want to increase that unless I didn't have any money. Equipment purchase, we kept that the same, for the most part, we've bought the equipment that we need, so I think we're in pretty good shape there, if you felt the need to remove that, we certainly could. Line 311 is the fuel, I increased that because with the Impala, I would do about $40 a month, but that was before I got the state card, so I now can go down the pit, off Mill Road to gas up, but I don't know what the Explorer is gonna cost me, I'm sure it's gonna be more than the Impala, so I just used an average of $40 a month, and that's how I came up with that 480, you know, if you, if we need to do something with that, you know, whatever your pleasure. 313, the IT computer, we never had that line before, as you remember, a few years ago, Cable gave up paying for IT and computers for all the departments, so far, I haven't done anything with that, so it is what it is. Line 057 is the grant match, and we really should have something there, for the most part, the grants, if I have a match, we will take the money out of the revolving account, but just in case someday we don't have an amount of money in there, we need to keep a line item with at least a dollar in it.
Exactly.
And Paula, correct me if I am saying anything incorrect. Internet service, I just explained, office supplies, this is, I use about a case of paper, or, yeah, I guess it's called a case, and ink, usually, unless I have a horrific time with Seabrook, or we've got some weather-related events, I usually can get around that $171, so that's what I put in there. Other expenses, I mean, office expenses, we left at a dollar, I don't know what that is, but we left it there just in case. Postage, same thing, we left it there currently, I don't do postage, I go house to house if we've got weather-related issues, or, you know, like during the pandemic, we had to go restaurant to restaurant or whatever, and I worked with the health agent on that, we didn't mail anything. Radio repairs, I left at 100, I don't think, I don't anticipate anything, we've got radios that are in good shape, and again, if I had to pull it out of the revolving account, I Salary, so this is the biggest thing, so it did go up, if you remember, on April 1st of this year, due to the bridge, the twin covert bridge covert program, I had to be, get certified and be full-time in order to continue processing that, so you made a motion that I had to work at least 35 hours a week, I did do that until I started filling in with ZBA, now I'm 40, 40 hours, 41 hours, I'm a little bit over, which I assume will go back to normal maybe now that we have, or hopefully, we have somebody that will be in that spot. So, that's the increase on that, and when Paula and I were going over this, we figured it at 40 hours a week, even though I hope to go back to maybe that 35, just, and also on your motion, I said that I, it was not necessary for me to have any, any kind of benefits and known Hampshire retirement, so that is in the motion that you made on April 1st. Telephone, Seabrook pays for my phone, I have two phone lines, so that's why that's always been a zero, I don't have a cell phone. A vehicle repair, again, we're in pretty good shape, $100 should pay for a sticker and an oil change, maybe, once a year.
You have zero.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, vehicle maintenance is where I was thinking of, okay, sorry, what do I have for vehicle repair?
You put that on the wrong line?
No, that was probably me. No, we put zero there, that's good, that can stay there. Um, let's see.
Oh, because you have vehicle maintenance and vehicle, all right.
That's right, okay.
You have two different lines.
Okay. Training, I try to do most of my training free, either FEMA or Homeland Security in Seabrook, so so far, you haven't really had to spend anything except, I spent $21 on food at one of the trainings I went to in Concord, my big, my big expenditure. Seabrook, so let me explain with Seabrook here, this has never been a line item in my budget, ever, and after some research, Paula explained to me, it's got, we've got to raise and appropriate funds, so when we have drills and training, and then the graded drill, we have to pay for our staff, our ELC staff, ahead of time, so we've got to raise and appropriate, and then I give a bill to Homeland Security, Seabrook, and we get reimbursed. Oftentimes, it takes a couple months before we get that, so for this cycle that we're starting as of now, I put in for, what is that amount, $21,750 is what I requested. I spend a great deal of time Monday and today on the phone with Seabrook, they are having budget problems, hard to believe, so they haven't confirmed that this is our, gonna be our rate, but this would be the worst case, this is the highest amount, okay, and all I could do was go by, we have to do this assessment every year, and in previous years, it's been anywhere from $29,000 on an off year when we don't do training, it's like 313,400, so it varies, but this is basically the ballpark. So, that makes this budget look terrible, we'll, I'll have to explain that during deliberative. And then vehicle maintenance was what Joe just mentioned, so there's enough money in there, I don't think I need tires, they will tell me if I do, I think I'm in pretty good shape with the sticker and the oil change that I'm getting, there's a couple little minor things that have to be done, but I'm in pretty good shape with that. And just as a final, I should have done this in the beginning like the police chief did, but whatever, so just so that you know, people in TV land, hi there, emergency management director, part of what I do is I plan and direct disaster responses, or crisis management activities, I provide disaster preparedness, I do training, prepare emergency plans, not only for the town, but with the schools, and procedures for any events, whether it's hurricanes, floods, heaven help us not earthquakes, technological events, pandemics, nuclear power issues, hazardous spills, hostage situations, and I work really closely with the welfare agent, I work with health, and obviously, police and fire. And so far, in 2025, as a result of working together, I have been able to bring in a little under $600,000 in reimbursement slash grants because of weather-related events, so we did pretty good, most of that was FEMA money, and I think that's it.
All right, good, excellent. Any questions on this budget?
No, I think she gave a very good account of what it is, so.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
And there will be the offsetting revenue of the same amount for the Seabrook.
Right.
Right. Thank you. That's gonna be the hardest thing because never, in all the years, it's never been there, so.
And that money comes back to our general fund because we're paying out, like she said.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, and then, um-
The building department, where we did the inspection fees, we still had to show it, right.
And then, do you want to do conservation?
Yes, please.
So, we had our conservation meeting last week, and we went over this, for the most part, it has stayed the same, I don't know if you need me to explain anything, the new things are fuel and equipment repairs because we have an ATV that we can use on the trails for maintenance. What I do want to point out is the second to the last line, trail maintenance, there's a journal entry error there, which Paula and I caught today, so there's gonna be $1,664 coming out of that. It was put in there instead of in our conservation fund, which was to do with our fences on the peanut trail, so it was just put in the wrong place, so that's gonna be taken out of there.
So, actually, your budget went down, right?
The current, the actual, yeah.
Yep. Any questions on that? ZBA, so, this is really gonna be more in your ballpark than it is in mine, we've plugged in the figures that we've currently spent advertising, that can go down because our applicants have to pay for the advertising, so you can see, we, I proposed it to go down. Legal, also, the applicants, they have to pay their legal fees, we may have some, a little work, but $500 should cover it. Office supplies should cover, we have a new printer now, and the printer contract, and Paula can correct me if I'm wrong, covers not only the printer maintenance, but the ink that goes with it, so we shouldn't have to buy ink, so really, that amount is just so we can buy paper.
And that's shared with planning?
Yes.
So, we got a new machine up there?
Just a regular tabletop printer.
Yeah.
So, what happened with the big printer?
Oh, that we love, oh, wait, that's-
Up here, this one-
Big old copy machine?
Yeah, is that gone now?
Yeah, it's not working.
It's gone.
That's why we got this other printer copier.
And it's outdated.
Well, no, I didn't know if we-
It was outdated.
When you said get a new printer, I didn't know if we got a new one.
Oh, no.
No.
And the plotter is still there, though.
Right, I know that, yeah.
Right, and the plotter's great, Robin knows how to use it, I think, you know how to use it right now, no? Okay. People, Bill Landry, I think, we've shown a few people how to use it, it really works great for what we need, so now that people actually are using it, it's, I think it's very useful, it's a fabulous piece of equipment. Training, again, you guys, I'm sure are gonna be sending whoever you hire for training, so there is a little money there, and again, that could be combined with planning, if you end up making this position one, which according to the MS4, it is one position, the only thing has to be that's separate really is our escrow money, which Planning Board is separate, Robin does, and I'm doing the ZBA, but that is something, if you wanted to pool it together, you certainly could.
It would be best to keep it separate because that way there, if anybody from the ZBA wants to take any of those classes from NHMA, that money would come from the ZBA fund, you know what I mean?
Sure.
That they, that they offer versus that way there-
That's up to you guys.
Right, which would be, which would be addressed that way, and then Planning Board has their own that they, we use for-
Yep, I think the thing that I noticed, sitting up here, is that when somebody comes in, whether, first of all, we can get that sign that says buy appointment only out of there, first of all, again, that's, you guys can decide to do that, but when somebody comes in, they need to be able to come in and speak, if it's about Planning Board or ZBA, without saying, oh, wait, is, am I in here for the right time, so the poor guy or gal that's sitting there doesn't have to figure out what his time card's supposed to be saying.
No.
You know what I mean? So, we want to be available, we're supposed to be available to assist the public whenever possible, so that was just my thing that I've noticed while I've been here. And then I think, I think that covers it.
What would be the harm in combining the two budgets, Planning Board and ZBA, combining them but leaving the separate lines as needed for each board?
Yeah, so you can combine them, but the lines would still be ZBA planning.
Right, like we do with the executive.
Payroll would still be broken out.
Correct.
But you could do like a quarter ZBA, three quarters planning, however, you know, whatever they do more, and then it could just be broken out.
Planning Board normally requires a lot more time than the ZBA.
Yeah.
So, and like she said, it's, this is to keep the, just specific payments, but from what Trish was saying, when-
Because there are different committees, so.
Right, I get that, but if, like, say, office supplies, if that was combined between the two, because whoever's up there is not gonna be like, well, I use three pages for ZBA and seven for planning.
There should, that stuff could be more.
You're not gonna be able to figure that out.
Right.
If you put all of it but left the different lines based on planning, based on, like, the two different salary lines, but-
Right.
Trainings combined, office supplies, postages combined, if you combine some of the lines, it might not make, might not be too bad.
And you, it's kind of like growing pains, you guys are gonna figure out what works for you for, for what is happening upstairs, we've been this way for, you know, 892 years, so who knows, you might come up with a better plan.
Well, this is, for me, like, we always talk about, though, this is this way here, for the training purposes, we're gonna get a true definition of how much we're spending on each board for our training.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Right, and that's what we're looking for, right? When we do these things.
And I just, it was like office supplies, how are you gonna count the staples and-
Right.
That, that's what I was thinking more about, not training, but-
I think that's it for me.
Thanks, Trish.
All right, thank you, Trish.
Okay.
And honestly, for the office supplies and stuff like that, we could always just get rid of it altogether because we have cabinet downstairs, you know, like, a- because we have cabinet downstairs, you know, like a pool for the town hall.
Well, and that's the point that I had brought up before about just alleviating that whole thing for the office supplies for both boards and slightly increasing for downstairs because it's basically the whole one building that all these offices are in.
And stuff with, you have, Treasurer has an office supply line, and Building, and it's all using the same stuff.
Except for the town clerk, because they got to kind of be separate, but everybody else could be one budget for supplies, stuff like that.
I think that would be the better route to go.
Right.
Moving on.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Good.
So budgets.
That's it for budgets.
All right. Announcements. Tree lighting ceremony, November 30th at 5:00 PM.
You have action items.
Action items.
Action items. They do the tax abatement.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. All right. That abatement that we talked about last night was obviously verified for the proper credit. And Joe?
So I'll move to, oh, I'll move to approve the abatement credit for Tax MAP 1-4-1 for a total amount of $7,901.57. This, this amount includes interest of $32.58.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next will be the Board of Selectmen need to approve the MS1 summary inventory evaluation for the town of the tax year 2025. I need a motion.
So I'll move to, move that the Select Board approve and sign the MS1 summary inventory evaluation for the town of Newton for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
We have an employee that we're not going to get into depth about why, but this employee needs to move some PTO from her bank into her, so that she can use it.
So I authorize Robin Sparks to transfer 20 hours from her PTO bank to her current balance to carry the balance forward to 2026 if left unused.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have for announcements, the Board of Selectmen will not be meeting tomorrow night, but we will be meeting next Monday night on the 24th at 5:00 PM to continue budget reviews because Tuesday is obviously the Planning Board meeting. And then we will talk, the Newton Tree Lighting will be held Sunday, November 30th at 5:00 PM. Where, Joe?
It's going to be at the Historical Building on 22 South Main Street. And to go along with that, I'd like to thank Susan Peterson for the donation of several, several decorations for the tree.
Thank you very much, Susan. We appreciate that. And also, let us not forget, the Toys for Tots will be held at the Newton Fire Station on December 13th from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. Please bring an unwrapped toy and enjoy the many festivities that they have planned. Anybody got anything else that we don't have here?
No, I'm good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.